Ready?
Yep.
Chair Anne Barbieri.
Here.
Chair Greg Shilton.
Yes.
Erin DeKeiser. Brett Hale.
Here.
Emily Gray.
Here.
Keith Dustin.
Online.
Lauren Stringham. Matt Holton.
Here.
Mick Sudbury.
Here.
Patrick Schaper. Edith Moonlake. Robert Fignan.
Here.
Sherry Orne. And Joseph Stitzer. Thomas Siren.
Present.
Thank you. Thank you, Tyrena. Okay, we have a message here today. When speaking, please speak loudly and distinctly for the video and audio recording. Please state your name and the municipality you represent. And I will try to remember to call on you by your name and your city as well. So if you keep clashing this. You might as well. We're thinking for the reminder. That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, there you go. Exactly. You know, there are days I can't remember my own name. I look at a bear and go, who are you? Names are always good. All right. On the order, we've got our roll call. And our first item on the agenda is the consent item. The October 21st special board meeting minutes. The least agreed Bingham Creek part authority, which is contained in your package. The interlocal agreement was felt like showing for waste recycling collections at the county facility. And the adoption of resolution 4431 approving compensation deferment general manager serving on the Utah Local Government's trust corps. I'll take comment or most.
I have a comment because of the minute I was there. Are they here?
They're.
I guess that we.
Yeah.
I guess you didn't have any opportunity to all of them. We wait their approvals and just approve them in our next meeting.
Do you want to do that?
I would, I would. Hold those up. They consented and that would be.
All right.
Because it's no big deal to this two of them.
Right? Yeah.
They need to.
Okay. Any other? Sherry. Troublemaker. Okay, any other comments or emotions?
I'll make a motion to approve me since that agenda with the removal of the board meeting. Maybe from October 31st.
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay.
Thank you, Mick. Duncan Duckberry for that. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, motion passed. All right, we close this meeting for public comment. Is there anyone here or online that would like to make a comment? Seeing that there is none, we will close the public meeting and we will move to our business items. Number 3.1, the 2024 third quarter financial report. We'll turn this over to Tam and we will need a customer. And did that give a challenge?
All right, so my staff here required to bring you a quarterly report and sort of bring in the third quarter. We operate as you know on January through December as far as our budget and unit managers and so. So Helen worked very hard on this and gathered the information. And so I would go there and turn it over to you because just so you know, Helen was a rock star. And we're thankful that she's joined us. It's great to have her on the show. Thank you.
Thank you, Tam. Right. Yeah. This is not going to be, I don't think, much different than what you think you have for your quarterly report. I'll just go through and explain the columns and what they are. First column of the report is the third quarter year-to-date, the January through September 30th actual amount for the community work. The budget column next to that is the budget for a whole year, so the annual budget of 2023. The next column is the difference between the first and the last. And then we have the percent of the budget column, which would be the actual budget percentage. So I have 75% through the year to get September 30th. So that's an age to go back to the actual column. The last column is the year-to-date, so the main time period for 2023. The first slide here are revenues. This is pretty much what we expect for a heavy bulk event of the residential collection. Revenue has increased since 2023 by 300,000 dollars. And that's primarily due to increasing the residential collection fee of $188,000 and the increase for residential collection of $5,000 over from 2023. That is to be exact, if you had a rate of 2023, we'd be incrementally increased every quarter or so that way. So you could immediately hit that fourth quarter into the life. I wanted to go through. Those are personnel. And I totally prepare since the 2024 increase from $23,000 to $23,000. And that's due to the increase in salaries and the increased health insurance. You will probably notice there on the column, there are 400% over spent on the government's borrowing. And we can prove the location account. That's because we can change figures during the year and change them different where I see the accounts. And Q, U of A, and those are out of different deal accounts, whichever. So the offset to that 200% and it was the 20% of social security and that's made. So it's actually not. Speaker two, maybe? I'll see some guy that's fantastic and be like, oh. I think that. Okay.
No one's talking, not.
So they can barely hear. They can barely hear?
No.
Yeah, sorry. I have to reject. Yeah, thank you.
I have this thing.
Maybe I'm a little mobile, so I'll try to articulate.
You're doing great.
Um, operating expenses. We have operating expenses. Oh, sorry. Thank you. We are at 73% spent for operating expenses, so we're doing well there. From 2023 compared to 2024, we're 482,000. We've been more, like $482,000 in 2024 than in 2023. And that's primarily due to increased maintenance costs. And those maintenance costs were part of shop labor and the shared cost due match trend. So that led to 84%, but overall, our pictures were doing very well. The next slide explains the fuel it was perfected for the year September 30th of 2024. We spent $1,015,000 from fuel expenses to September 30th as opposed to $1,052,000 in 2023. If you look at the graph to the right, you can see that the cost of fuel has actually gone down just a little bit between the two years. And we spend, we spend 91% of our fuel purchases were from C and G, which is the, you know, when you're off fuel. Next slide is the maintenance costs. And that top block is the total for the year. This block underneath it is just for the third quarter. And this block, you can see that the kind of the orange-yellow bar is 2024. And you can see that 482,000 that I was talking about in the prior slide. And the next slide is recycle tons. We recycle 14,392 tons through September 30th of 2024 as opposed to 14,715, so that's actually decreased a little bit. I'm trying to get that to clarify a question here. On the recycled tons, is this just what comes in the blue camp?
There's also the front loaded. So for city halls that have a front load recycling, that includes, that's included in this as well.
So scrap, we can't go through and say this is recycling, this is, it just gets.
Landfill.
In landfill, okay.
So yeah, that's a good point because there used to be some recycling in other areas as well.
Okay, thank you. And the next slide, we have the refuse tons for the city. So the top block is the total that we've had through September 30th. And the block being are where we've taken those stat reviews. We do that we usually use the transportation. And it's pretty much on trans, like downtown from 2023. We go to the next slide, we have recycle costs for tons. And the revenue is 2024. And you can see it pick down slightly each month throughout the year so far. Think that we'll see a leveling of that based on 20 some of the years, but that's what it looks like now. And then our next slide is certification. We did submit certifications for 2024 in September. The total submitted was $2,697,715. We do have a hydro balance in that outstanding. If you look at that second column. And that's because citizens can go in and apply for extension of the property tax payment. And they can do that year-over-year. So that's why we have some outplanings from prior years. But we are expecting $2.6 million for this year. And the next slide is refunding, customer rehab. We had 36 during the quarter of, at the third quarter of 2024, at $1,382. And most of those are due to open payments like customers or home moving and having already paid a bill. It was, it was out of it. To keep you over the next slide, that is capital expenditure for 2024 through September 30th. And we spent $4,120,972 on capital expenditures through that time period. And those are all from vehicles that we purchased or that we ordered in prior years. We have, my understanding is we have ordered the 4D supply load trucks for 2024 that we were expecting to order in 2024. We will not receive those until 2025, so that can only be deferred in 2025.
And to clarify, so we did pay for the chassis of those and it will be the payment for the body. The one, the body has the arm and the packer.
Okay. All right. We will make it more accurate.
You're good.
Cash balances on the next slide. The dark gray line at the bottom that's kind of heading downward is 2024. We have a little over $4 million in cash. And the reason that it's gone down like that is because of the capital expenditures, the trash outlets for those from the 2023 orders. We do expect that cash to be a little over $6 million by the end of the calendar year, though, however. Because we will be receiving some of those certifications that we submitted. And that is all. I have a question on the maintenance portion of this. And this is going to hammer on the C and D these versus these those. And I apologize if I've asked this question in the past. But we see our maintenance costs going exponentially higher and higher constantly. And I wonder if we do a comparison versus maintenance on our diesel trucks or bus, the engine truck. Will we do that?
So we don't have enough apples to apples because we don't have any side load diesel yet. So those will be coming in next year and that's going to be that test group that we talked about. Can purchase at least four and see how they run. One of the things that in talking with our asset manager about diesel trucks that are going to be coming in. Is his point was these are different diesel trucks than we've ever ran before. So the information we have from previous, which was, I think the last information we have was from 2018 because that's when we totally replaced, that was the last they replaced with C and D. That data may not even make any sense to compare. But we do have other municipalities that are running diesel, such as Draper. And Salt Lake City does have a few that we can kind of compare. And then we also want to see what the admission was like, right? That was one of the questions.
Yeah, for sure. I was just curious because sometimes it's like, it's a, you know, more data of the R, C and D. And maybe just hard for them to expensive and so it's costing us more or less kind of date. And I understand it has probably, definitely viable, so you keep costs down to some degree. But I was just curious if we're seeing an uptick because we use a different type of vehicle than maybe a vast majority of the market? Or maybe most of the market is. The smaller carry the no diesel, but I don't feel on that.
There is a large market for C and G. That's a good question. There's also buses and other. Types of transportation that use C and G. And Salt Lake County Fleet does service like the U of U runs the transportation, which is a C and G. Salt Lake Flit, Salt Lake Community College also. So, but that of course is a different type of equipment. But yeah, there's, there is that economy of scale against, is that where you were heading?
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering, and maybe it's not even possible for us to look at it because we don't have enough speed money or stuff to even analyze. So I was just curious if it was cost more for maintenance. The C and G, that would have cost to do the diesel to write the person.
Hard, it's hard to know. You know, we have done some comparisons with Draper's information. And one thing to note is not everyone keeps track the way we do, which I'm proud of our team. We, as you know, we're, we're getting and analyzing so that we can be efficient as possible and cost effective. But we will have that true comparison next year. You know, those trucks are due to come in in January or February. And so we'll have a good, you know, I would think by second quarter or third quarter, we'll have some sort of information to bring back to you. One of the things about the higher cost coming in is again, we're eight, the AD trucks are going out, the new ones are coming in. We did have to add the grease jockey. The lubrication system for the arm, we had to add that as an operational expense where it's the fourth part of the purchase. So that total for those 10 trucks coming in of $70,000. I think this is a reminder, Matt. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, good question. I love it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Helen. Always working your magic. Okay, we'll move on to 3.2. This is the discussion that arose from our last meeting. And just want to cover the budget and follow up on the trailer rental program. I noticed. The last meeting, we were, you probably presented this information prior to that, but it really stood out that with our trailer rentals and reservations, the cost is $661,000. But we only bring in 147 in revenue. So that leaves really a deficit of $514,000. So the discussion is, what do we want to do with that trailer program? And how does that affect the budget that we're about to adopt? And I just want to reach out to all of you with your different cities. How do you feel about this program? Does your city use the program? If you look over to the side, there's only 83 trailer reservations at an estimate $700 to $800 per trailer rental.
And that's for the canyons and the North County folks. That's what those reservations are for, just as a reminder. So I went in and did a little more digging. And then I had Yale Johnson pull some information per city, which we don't have in the packet. I apologize, but to look at how many trailers are being rented per city. So our big users is Mill Creek City. We also have Holiday. So Mill Creek City last year was 253 rentals. Holiday City was 230. We have Taylorville at 179, Fortwood Heights is 236. So those are our bigger users of that service, at least last year. That may vary slightly just depending on resident needs. But, and then I don't have a breakout of how many green, how many of those are green and how many are bulk.
If I'm remembering from last week, you said this averaged out to $15 cents per youth, per caliber. Or like the income, repair fee goes whatever.
And then just to go back to what was the purpose? So this program rolled out in 1997 and it was a means for residents to remove their bulky waste, right? The other purpose was to think about public policy. It was, there was an understanding even from day one of rolling it out that there would be a subsidy from that monthly fee. But the thought was that it could, that the program is to help reduce illegal dumping, same as scrap. So those are in place. They cost money, right? So the thought was that part of the monthly fee would go towards that and that was okay. That policy decision can be totally changed, whatever you all want to do because you are the governing authority. And then, you know, I was asked to bring forward some information comparisons, right? So what is it truly cost? It's tough because we can only give you an average. But I can say that the more central a rental is, such as Mill Creek or Taylorsville, Holiday, those are, quote unquote, going to be cheaper than the outlying areas, obviously, right? So, but to capture that is difficult. The, the thing that we can, I'd say 90% confident can say is that those canyon areas in the North County are obviously going to be more expensive. And that's why I wanted to try to pull those out. And the estimated cost for those is seven to $800 per, depending on where. And then just try to, you know, pull that out as a separate consideration. And it does reduce that dependency on the monthly fee if we pull that out because we're not, you know, we're not considering scrap right now and doing away with that or charging a fee. So I'm just trying to treat that as the policy. And then looking at the estimated, quote unquote, subsidy thereafter would be 43 to 44% or per cents per home per month. If you would, at the current charges. And we do have a proposed and recommendation to increase that going forward. Keep it in mind that that very well could affect the number we rent. I do want to note that Yale numbers are different than the ones that we showed you last month. Last month, we showed you that there were 1,071 rentals. Yale's information that she pulled was 1,259, which again would take that, you know, subsidy down. The more we rent, the, the less that subsidy is. And so may I go on to the comparisons with cities?
Absolutely.
And then to ask for private haulers as well. So you can see that we're not the only government entity that offers this service. And then there's comparisons on rates. So it's not uncommon, you know, to do this as a government for our municipality. Murray City has a 30-yard bulk. There's no charge. This is a program that they rolled out, I believe, two years ago. Airhail can correct me, but I think it was two years ago. And they mirrored this after our scrap program. So residents wanted a bulky cleanup. They, they surveyed residents a couple of times to see if they would want to leave, walk toward and go to city services. And each time it's been known. And weekly recycling was one reason they wanted to save. The other one was the bulk cleanup of scrap. So Murray rolled this out. There is no charge for theirs. It's done through their contracted vendor and there's limited scheduling, just like we have. So there's been Murray subsidizing, correct? And then their green trailer is $40 per. So you know that that's being subsidized, obviously. West Valley City has a 30-yard roll-off, no charge, limited availability. And then, you know, they do the curbside, I believe, once a month for their residents and it's done by zone, by curbside. There can only be so big of a pile or what have you, similar to what Sandy City does. Draper City, thanks to Hazel, Dunmore HR manager, who used to work at Draper, could give me some data. And I, you know, they, they have a 20-yard that they serve $120 per rental. And that is up to six ton limit. So we know that that subsidized with a tonnage. The 30-yard is 150 weight limit, 10 tons. They also offer a landfill voucher, which I didn't realize. It's $10 off of the fee. And I'm assuming they go to the transferred landfill. Riverton 20-yard roll-off at 240, up to three tons. South Salt Lake City has a 13-yard. I could not find the rate on that one. They also, for South Salt Lake City, you may know, or I'll just remind anybody that the, the residents are allowed to take their residential truck or trailer load to the transfer station by the month for no charge. The, that was a deal that was made or agreement that was made for Salt Lake County and Salt Lake City to be able to have that transfer station in South Salt Lake City off 500 West and 33rd. That was part of the agreement. And then the, one of the things to note, and I didn't realize this, but South Salt Lake City just rolled out weekly recycling and increased their fees from $12 a month to $14 a month. And that was done because they surveyed their residents and they wanted it. Sandy City has a 30-yard roll-off at 250 and the city pays the tipping fee. So it's not, not uncommon for governments to do this. And as far as private haulers, just ask Andy King, our asset manager, to go out there. And Andy King is the one that manages this program now. He went out online and just looked up a couple of examples. A smaller provider such as Trash Daddy, you can see they're priced 15 yards and 455, 30 yards and 790. The Waste Management, which is a bigger company, 15 yards is 817. So one of the things in the past, because this isn't the first time this conversation has happened. When we were under Salt Lake County and now when we separated, there's been questions from elected officials of should we do this? What's the purpose? And so it's not uncommon. One of the things to, to note is that in the past, like I showed data and I don't have it before me. But just to say that there's plenty of business out there. There's residents in the district that is, they will rent from a private hauler. Because the purpose of the trailers is for not a contract. It's a person coming in and doing work at one of our residents' home. It's a resident meeting to get their bulk waste hold off. Or if they're doing their own home project, then that's the purpose of it, right? For not for a contractor to go in. That's part of that agreement that residents say, I'm not hiring a contractor to do the work. This is my project or I just need to have a cleanup. And sometimes folks will share with their neighbors. I hope that gave some information to help to talk about the, the services. I think it's value service, but you know, be willing to do whatever you.
I just want to make sure that I understand. The, the vendors that we provide, what, what is this size? Do we provide the 18?
18. So kind of in between some of these, the other comparisons?
Any comments? You know, one, one of the things I was being that Taylorsville, the third largest user of the city, I have to be fair about it and bringing up the subject, if we continue with this program, which it sounds like most people want to do that. Do we want to, that, that the individual cities pay for some of these fees? That they get billed separately to make up for some of these fees? What are your thoughts? And let's see what that looks like before I have any thoughts on it. And how, how would that, how would that work?
How would that work?
Um, can you just explain how the vouchers are working now? With the QR code, the cities now get billed for the ones that are being used.
Actually, that's not happening. Is that correct, Renee? We're still paying the full bill for vouchers?
But eventually that will.
It can.
It can.
It could shift.
And if we, if you send a trailer out to Taylorsville for whatever reason, Taylorsville does pick up a portion of that cost?
Only if it's city-sponsored, that you have to pick up the full cost. So for example, I mentioned Mayor Bush sponsoring a trailer for somebody who's cleaning up after their, their sibling passed away. So the currents paid for that. It comes out of the municipal services district fund. But if, which again is by the, the resident of that particular city. So that, if it's city-sponsored, then the city does pay for that.
Nick?
So on the vouchers, can you tell by city, how many people use the voucher? Like, do people use MAG, with the vouchers for MAG, no word?
Yes, we can. We can determine that. Do you, would you like us to pull up that information off our board? Is that something you would like to see?
I would like to see what, how, you know, I would see how much we use that.
MAG is the highest user.
Okay.
But I can't say MAG is the highest user. I think current is next. I'm just going off the top of my head, but then I don't know. I'm just going off the top of my head, but then I don't know. If you're able to share that, are the folks online able to see this? Or do you have to stop sharing and start again? I'm not sure.
We're not seeing anything different.
Okay, she's gonna. This is the management information system for it. So each manager has a page in here that they pull up. And Jorge beneath this is the creator of this beautiful work of art that we can have information at our fingertips. Before it was Excel spreadsheet, many of them, or a very big one that had breakout. So anyway, this shows you the use. And this is year-to-date, is that correct, Renee?
What's the difference between the topic and I think the topic was HTS?
Yeah, so it depends on the port you made it back from, the map, the, the. So.
The topic was something I had to move.
Yeah. This is where the QR code helps to track the work fund. The municipality is using it. They have a, they have a, they have a address. Because that's your, make sure that it's preferred, get ready. So that's where.
And the QR code increased usage of vouchers overall?
So it's a rapid decrease. Again, I do think it's because we're able to now monitor it. For folks are going into the libraries and grabbing a foot back and getting out of their bed.
On directors.
On directors, yeah. So it helps manage the revenue.
So for example, last year we transferred ninety-two thousand in TIP fees related to vouchers. This year we're anticipating right around forty now to show that decreased their cost because we're controlling it. Yes, sir.
This is Robert Emgration. So was the intent for it to be publicly available, such stack, or to be available from the mayor and the council and health as needed? Because it's intended to be one for households.
Right, yeah. So when they're at the library or at city halls, I think that those started to be monitored closer and there would be some sort of screening as time went on. Before it was just people would go in and grab stacks. So, you know, we started to curb that with limiting. And then it's one thing to know that somebody might go in and grab a stack, but they may not use all of them, right? So there, it's hard to track how many actually get distributed. And then we can track usage, right? But how many get distributed with QR, I think we can track both if I'm, yeah.
I don't think QR tracking though.
Is the QR smart enough that it won't allow homes to visit multiple times or is it unlimited?
It's one.
It's one?
Yes. And sometimes we'll get a phone call in or someone will show up, right? And say, hey, oh, Renee, time to administer. Anytime we'll get a phone call or someone will come in and say, it's not working. And we're looking like, well, you've already scheduled for the calendar year. But we'll still give them one, especially if they came in. You know. But that's very good.
I think one of the best things about this is that we've seen the usage drop appropriately, right?
I think so.
And yet nobody complains.
Probably because the people who are dropping are the people who are taking not using appropriately.
But then I think that goes to show that when the programs are used the way they're meant to be, for the most part, people are pretty happy with the program itself. And I feel better about that being one of the cities kind of at the top there that people aren't just taking a stack and, and using them that way. So any other comments or questions?
Can I follow up with that?
Robert's senior.
And we limit how the vouchers are released going forward if the QR code really is working?
Yes, the idea is eventually we don't have the paper. But there will be those cases where somebody, it may not be techno, you know, savvy.
In my case, we don't have public buildings in Emgration yet. But I have the staff at my house and the mayor calls and says, so-and-so needs one. I deliver it.
Well, that's helpful.
So I just wonder if we need to change our practice from having a pile at the library or at city hall to say, use a QR code. But maybe us in the room are the ones that have the stash for those that don't have the computers. Just a thought, just a good thought.
I had a thought, Emily Grayson-Salade, back on this trailer issue. It seems to me like there's two kind of questions that we've been looking at with this. So first is overall the deficit and how that ultimately affects the budget? Because we've been looking at the fee increases. And then the second is whether or not it's ruled to subsidize that much. And to me, they're two separate questions.
Wait, we have a question. Okay, Emily, let that go up and then council member Stitzer, we'll go back to you in just a moment.
So as far as, as somebody else might have a different view, as far as how much it affects our overall budget, it feels like, I mean, it's a half a million dollars. So a half a million dollars, we have a million dollars. But in the big scheme of things, it doesn't seem like, even if we said bag the whole program, that's not going to fix our fee increase issue. So to me, that is, is less significant when it comes to overall how it affects the budget. Now whether or not we should be subsidizing, I mean, it does seem to me that there are plenty of municipalities that do. And maybe we feel differently, maybe we don't. I feel, for me personally, and I believe for both residents, at least in our area, paying an extra, you know, forty-three to fifty cents a month for the option of having subsidies that are today is, is worth it. And like, people might feel differently, but that, that feels worth it to, to provide that service for people. Because usually when you have it and you need a trailer, you're dealing with a lot of other expenses at the time. And so anything that you can do to make that project, it's probably already going to be more expensive. I think it's going to be easier, makes it, so.
Thank you, Emily. I had, we're going to follow up with that in just a second.
This is Councilmember Stitzer with Copperton. I just wanted to give you a quick reminder that with the Transjordan landfill vouchers, Copperton actually has a separate program that we use. We were contracted with Transjordan landfill in conjunction with Rio Tinto with an older contract from the early seventies. So we actually don't utilize the voucher program through Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling at all. We have an entirely different program. So I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that as well. And that's why Copperton is not on that list.
Thank you, Chappa. I appreciate that. Greg?
Thank you.
Greg has a comment, Greg's from White City.
So kind of going, going back to the trailer, I see that there's a recommendation for a new price for the trailers and I'm, I'm just curious. Because I'm kind of for subsidizing this as well. I think it is a good benefit that it kind of makes us all team players, all of our communities working together to benefit. You know, some, some communities may not necessarily take advantage of different things as much as others. And so that all kind of washes out at the end of the day. And I feel like, my, my curiosity with these suggested rates down here at the bottom is, is that just kind of keeping up with the status quo? Or does that, how much does that bite into the deficit of that? Because I, I don't mind if that goes up a little bit in my mind. But I do think that we should still kind of help that program out. I think it is a good benefit for our communities.
Yeah, so to, to, it's, it's tough for me to say because it depends on how many rentals.
Right.
So we're bumping up the bulk by fifty bucks per trailer. Is that going to reduce the number of rentals that come in, the requests, right? And then for green, we're bumping that up to cover the, the tipping fee at, at Diamond, which is twenty-five dollars a load.
Yeah.
So I could say roughly, you know, what would that do? It's going to give you another, depends on how many rentals. And then the other thought is, you know, to have that roll-off container available. So the only way for me to determine true cost or close to a cost is to look at how many reservations did we have with scrap? Because that's our, that's our major for the hook lift and the roll-off is what the costs are, for rental for scrap.
Yeah.
So taking the number of reservations that were last year, which is just over seven thousand, divided by the cost of one point one million, so it comes out to be a hundred and seventy-five dollars for each. Is that a true cost? It's an average.
Right.
And so we won't really know a true cost until we go it out, if that makes sense. And Kelly might have done some calculating over here, but.
I didn't.
Don't worry.
Get in your head real quick, we'll wait.
Sherry Orne, Sherry Orne of Harriman. I am, I'm not a proponent of subsidizing. I, I obviously become a cop. Harriman does their own cleanup. We, we had three thousand thirty vehicles show up to our cleanup this spring. And so our residents are paying for that. And then in addition, they're subsidizing every other community resident. So I believe if you live in a city that doesn't offer that, which is a lot of cities don't, then the city should cover the gas. If we don't want to cover the cost at this, at this board, then the individual city should cover the gas in between that cost and what it actually costs for, for Woodford to provide that service.
So the proposal would be to build the city for any additional cost? So like, if we see, so, okay.
And I, it might just be complex. I don't, I don't know what.
It is very complex.
associated with, with that. But I, but I think that we drive ourselves into a hole when we don't cover the cost.
So Rachel had a comment about public good, did you?
Sure. Personal comment, not personal, but one of the, the reasons that entities like this will, will subsidize, I'm always very hesitant to use that word. It's, it's, we're government, that's the whole point. But is if you look at it, not just as paying for an individual trailer rental and other people subsidizing it, but everyone's getting the benefit of living in a cleaner community and that's what you're paying for. You're paying forty cents extra a month so that you have the benefit as well of not having trash piling up in your neighborhood because there's opportunities. And whether you or not you use the, the trailer or not depends. That's why the people who use the trailers pay a little bit more than those who don't. But everyone who's not using it is still getting the benefit of having clean communities.
This is Sherry. I think that was the same argument that we were using for the scrap program. There's only a small percentage of our residents that actually get it. But all of our cities benefit from having the trash. It's not a big rat pile in that. Okay, any other comment?
I have one question and I'm kind of confused. So on these trailer rentals, do you know, do you break them down by city? Do. Yeah, we can, we can pull that in. Okay, yeah. Yes, you can.
We can.
To answer your question, it'd be about fifty thousand, well, seventy-five thousand dollar more revenue to go towards offsetting the, the costs, right? So you have fifty dollars for the bulk and twenty-five for the green. So seventy-five bucks total increase. If we rent a thousand again, or in this case, we have twelve, twelve hundred. So that would increase that revenue if we have that many rents.
Yeah. I mean, I've, I've kind of spread shelter from White City again. I, I do feel like it's, it is a good benefit. I mean, ultimately, the price that we're setting is significantly cheaper than private entities that are providing services similar to that. And at the end of the day, I mean, we may not necessarily be the cheapest, but you know, different cities around us that offer their own are subsidized in different ways. And, you know, so like I said, it is kind of a team effort. And so I do like the, I still like that proposed price. I don't think it's ridiculous. I mean, I would certainly still rent one if, if I had a project, but it's take care of. So it's not a reasonable price, I feel like.
Okay, any other comments?
Emily?
Emily Grayson-Salade. Back with what you were saying about maybe charging differently, municipalities differently. I'm like, I'm stunned at that, but that's what concern is. And part of what we're doing is combining our efforts together so that we can get economies of scale. And if we start, if we start breaking things down like that, then it's like, well, like, what about this regular trash collection? Because some municipalities, like, like we could break it down on every level and say, well, I don't know if we're more, but. So, so openly, I feel like at some point, like it's part of what we're doing by gathering together. It's just creating an economy to scale in general. And so it makes more sense to just unify the costs. And so maybe holiday use is this program more, but it costs us less to do our regular trash pickup. And I don't know how that all worked out, but it, it makes sense to me to, to keep it the same. And I would imagine that would lower administrative costs.
Yes.
By not reducing.
The burden of it, yeah. Yeah, that's why we can go with the backfill tipping, right? We want to try to keep things manageable as possible.
Anyone else? Okay. I'm grateful that we had this conversation. I, for me, a half a million dollar deficit is significant. And I don't want to, you know, we have a lot of residents. I'm meeting with a couple this week, myself with the mayor, who, who have just seen, well, a five dollar increase on this one and they've gone down their tax bill and they're paying another additional three, four hundred dollars a year. And that's hard for them. They've got a lot of ki, they have kids or a lot of them are just elder, elderly.
Fixed income.
Fixed incomes, trying to make it by. So I don't want to dismiss that, that we are at a deficit of about five hundred thousand dollars. And I appreciate the economy of scale. I appreciate the fact that we have clean communities. That's huge to me. To me, that right there is worth this program. I just want to be really sensitive. Our city, Magna, I know is really concerned. Sherry, I know Taylorsville is concerned by these constant, it's only four dollars, it's only fifty cents, it's only this, but they do start to add up. And the other part is that I want to be cognizant of the fact that our job is to see that this, this, that Woodford runs as efficiently as possible. And if we, whatever we vote on, on this program, it, it makes sense to me because each one of these arguments, each one of these comments is very worth the weight of what has been said. And I just wanted to reemphasize why we brought this back to the table is that we need to be cognizant of each dollar. And each dollar of everybody, every taxpayer is sacred money to me. I, I kind of like, I like the proposed increase. I think that helps. I think that sends a message. If down the road, we feel like that we want to build entities separately for the subsidy, I'd probably be open to that as well. But I understand that there's a lot of cost involved in tracking and billing. The vouchers are pretty easy, they'll QR codes and they just add up and we can track those better. So anyway, if there are any other questions or comment, Emily?
Can you just remind me, the, the proposing, what were the prices for?
One ninety for bulk and fifty-five for green.
Yeah, that, the prices, basically. Communities for all to be.
One more clarification of the six hundred and sixty-one thousand a year trailer rentals and the base, how many? How does that account for? Ten thousand?
Oh, it was a thousand and seventy-one was what was presented last month. But the new numbers show there was twelve hundred and fifty-nine that were rented reserved last year. So of course that takes that burden down. And then if you pull out the reservation versus rental, that takes that burden down from the monthly fee, if you would.
So that calculation is about five hundred and fifty in terms of raw cost per rental. We're only charging.
It'd be, it'd be, yeah, roughly four, four hundred. Well, what I have up here is updated estimate for trailer resume, resume, after trailer reservation is four hundred and forty-eight to four hundred and forty-nine. But again, there's more rental that aren't accounted for. So roughly about forty-three cents of your monthly fee is going towards the ability to rent and then also for clean communities, which I think is a very good point. One thing I do know is, and, and it's not the discount, the concern that everyone has with raising rate, is that I pay for public transportation whether I'm using it or not. So I pay the user fee when I use it, then I'm also paying for it as a school. I mean, there's arguments for people that are single and have heard, you know, paying for school, kids at school, which I did for decades before I actually had stepchildren. So there's all those arguments and I respect everything. And that's one of the things. there's all those arguments and I respect everything. And that's one of the things I wanted to say when we get into this budget discussion is I respect and every one of you and where you are coming from and the, the responsibility that you feel as an elected official and representing your, your residents. Um, and it is, uh, you know, I totally recognize that we're not the only one coming to the table needing more, uh, funds and revenues. We are looking at everything, you know, and anything we can adjust, we will. And I will bring back later if we can make some adjustments. Um, for the budget, we have made some changes based on what you were, um, concerned about and expressed. But first off, I want to say the discussion, the debate and the dialogue, because that helps to get us to the decision making. So thank you.
And here I have this one more request, actually. How difficult is it rather than combining them on the single like it to separate those two out of scrap by itself? Could you kiss, could you make trailer reservations just by itself, just pull those numbers out there? Because that's really actually more scrap than it is trailer reservations, right?
Yeah.
Trailer rentals, right?
I did. I'm not sure if the, the one on screen, does that get printed for you?
No, that's not on.
Mine is just the same, like, anyway, not just in the, going forward, we probably keep those, you know, mine for the year. Definitely very different than.
Definitely, absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe start the new year on that one, track it that way instead.
The other thing to note is that, um, the northern county folks have been annexed into Salt Lake City, so I'm going to be working with city. Um, it doesn't make sense for us to have them in our boundaries. So that will slightly reduce that. Not significant, but it will bring that down to, you know, just slightly. But yes, we'll bring that out, make sure we record it accordingly.
Would that also reduce overall costs for weekly trash pickup? We're not relating that.
Good question. A contract, like cities provide that crew site service. And then our exchange is we provide the reservation for the, their annual cleanup. Got it? So each resident, both city and, and, um, what used to be an incorporated county had the option to reserve a trailer one fee, just like we can. So that's kind of the exchange. And we bill those residents that are, um, district and the city bills their own.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to three point three. Uh, tentative adoption of the tentative twenty twenty-five budget and fee schedule. Pam and Helen?
Okay, so I have up here subject change because I know that there's, um, possibly or not, there is going to be continued discussion, debate and dialogue. Um, again, fully understanding. So when we brought forward the proposed budget, we had, uh, twenty-five dollars, so a five fifty for home per monthly fee. Going through with science information, you and the board tasked us to bring back a six fifty and then going forward, it was a one fifty and one fifty to get to twenty-nine dollars by twenty twenty-seven. Understanding that we're taking off one year at a time. So, uh, right now, to follow your direction, this is what is before you. Um, subject to change, because if you want to make any changes between now and the final adoption in December, which would be my recommendation, is that if there's still discussion, um, that we don't plan on adopting on November eighteenth, there's still that public comment stage that we're required to do. One of the things to note about the November eighteenth, um, public hearing is that we need to publish what our rate increase is going to be two weeks before that meeting, right? So that's the first publication. We need to do a second publication the, the week prior to that. So, um, hopefully we can come to some sort of a consensus today so that we can start that, you know, drafting that publication. So that's what's here before you. Certainly understanding that you may want to make some changes. Sound like for the additional services for trailer rental, we would keep what's proposed. Although what I did is bump up that fourteen yard roll off to one eighty-five, but I can bump it back down to what we showed you previously. Um, I think we can use existing drivers for that. Um, and, and because I'm not sure how many rentals we're going to get. So I think we can go ahead and use what we could not add in FTE for that.
Any comments?
I do. So I have a question. So what about, like, you know, I talked to a bunch of residents that were where I live and, you know, they don't recycle every week, you know? They might do every couple of weeks. Um, and some of them say they don't have really much. The neighbors are always good about letting them put theirs in theirs. Um, so do we know what the price would be if we did every other week?
So I've estimated it'd be about a third, so roughly a dollar fifty per home per month of a quote-unquote savings or reduction in a fee. And that is something that we've talked about in a few board meetings. And the recommendation I had was that if, if you and the board wanted to entertain reducing the service, that we need to survey residents. Yeah, because the residents that have said we want it. And I'll be honest, when I saw South Salt Lake City bumped up to weekly and bumped up their, their fee, I was a little caught off guard by that. Uh, they've been bi-weekly for decades. So it was the residents that said, we want it, we're willing to pay. So I thought that was just an interesting example. But I, I know in the past when we met, and I might have mentioned this, I know you met the lead early last, last one, or last week. Or whatever. It feels like it's been a month. Um, the, the, we have surveyed residents in the past. And with a dollar fifty is what we've shown before, uh, you know, that the fee increase that we would need, this was in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, would be an additional dollar fifty to, to keep weekly recycling going. Um, there was well over two-thirds, it was seventy-five percent to seventy-eight percent district-wide wanted to keep it, were willing to pay. Even in turns in Magna, um, Northwest, it was over two-thirds.
With what year?
That was eighteen and nineteen. So we haven't done that. The survey we did last year was to talk about the increasing, um, cost to provide services. And, and we just basically said, you know, do you still support weekly recycling even with increased costs? We didn't put a dollar in there. There's ninety-five percent of the residents wanted to keep it. Now, if we put a dollar amount in there, we know that that will change and probably drop it down to seventy-five percent or so.
How are you surveying? Is it, is it like part of the bill that people can opt in to survey or is it random sample?
Random sample and it's done through our social media, website, pushing it out on community newsletters. Um, so it is random. We generally get five to six thousand response, which is a good sample size for the district at large.
The, the only difficult part about that is rate survey. We do check good response, but if you think about, if you have seventy thousand residents, generally a couple thousand that have responded, it's like, is it truly the overall consensus of your residents? The difficulty for the district or anybody else does the survey. You can't force people to do the survey. You have no idea for sure how everyone feels.
Yeah, that's true.
Any other comments, questions? Now the good time to voice them.
My name is that, this is Robert from immigration. Um, just to counter your comment, I think I see more full blue bins and black bins in our community. So the level of service for me is very important for a three-weekly.
Again, to the set out rate, which our quality assurance inspectors monitor and our sustainability coordinator is in the seventy, mid-seventy percent box. Uh, people put their cans out every week, which is quite high. Um, so, and as far as how much volume is in those cans, they're pretty full from what says our, um, sustainability coordinator is helping.
Well, yeah, um, about seventy percent of, uh, the cans that we monitor over, or the ones that are.
They're three quarters full. I'm not sure if everybody caught that.
I remember when I came on board in twenty twenty, um, especially twenty twenty-one, didn't, wasn't there a huge increase? Because everybody was at home and all of a sudden surge in, and prime and packaging. The amigas, yes, that, it's a little um, but I don't think, I don't anticipate that going down at all. Um, you know, I have retail stores and I have an online and the online just keeps doing this and the retail. So people I think are going to continue with, um, recycling. But that's certainly something that we could take a look at down the road and, um, really see where people want to be on that. I know in Taylorsville, it's pretty, it's pretty popular program and I think they can fill up their, their blue, their blue can.
Do you know, Pam, with Salt Lake with weekly, what was the increase that we saw that? And I was thinking something.
Salt, South Salt Lake City went up two dollars per home per month. To, to roll out weekly recycling.
Okay. Um, it's just a, a note on this tentative budget. Because we're voting on the budget for twenty twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken, Rachel. If we can find, if Woodford finds places that they can be more efficient or cut back, or we change the way billing is done for Woodford and the city. This doesn't mean we have to adopt the budget. We can't change the budget for twenty twenty-six. Am I right with that? Wait, take that again. If we adopt the budget for the next three years for twenty twenty-five and then, because we've we've recommended the increment, right, after, for twenty twenty-six and twenty-seven. That doesn't mean that we have to follow through on twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven budget increases. That is, perhaps gas prices will go up. I'm hoping that they do. Um, perhaps we'll find out that we're, um, collecting less scrap tonnage. Maybe that will, whatever those, yes, offer. We can account for that and we can take into account for the budget years twenty-two.
Right. So by adopting a phased approach, you're saying that fees, fees will go into place on those years. And next year, when you go to do our budget, the counting can, can account for that automatically. And there's no additional fee increase here in the state happen as part of that front because you've already moved it. But yeah, you could go back.
Change.
A month, we, we decided to make a change.
Right. We could make the change and hold on that. Right. But the, we, we often do it together when you're here. So it feels like we're doing it all at once. But technically, the fee increase process is separate from the budget approval process. You could do a free fee increase any time of year. In May, say, we need to increase our fees.
That's true.
And there's a procedure for that. And the fee increases is what requires you to have a sixth meeting, a meeting, the budget is here to actually get them. We just always combine them here. But that's innocent, so the difference is. So we would have to do that fee increase part necessarily.
All right. Yeah. So just to clarify, the public hearing does not have to happen every year if we don't raise rates?
You still have your, uh, budget public hearing.
Oh.
It doesn't have to be a different public hearing.
Okay.
Oh, who knew?
There are lots of districts that do their, uh, budget public hearings at their regular morning meetings.
Oh, you can do that then?
If you're not raising bees, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. We do, I would say.
For which?
For the water district, had no water.
Yeah. Are you just in these every year, even if it's just open little?
Sometimes our meetings are always at night. Yeah, sometimes I have to think about them.
Okay.
Emily?
Good enough, thank you.
You have a question?
Oh, Pam.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, comments or concern, we'll go ahead and I will take a motion on the tentative adoption of the tentative twenty twenty-five budget and fee schedule.
Oh. I was just gonna, um, I guess going ahead with that and not going to other options or?
No, if there's, if there is no comment.
What was the other off?
Five fifty, five fifty. What do you think, Nick?
Well, I'm all about.
Put your cards on the table.
Sorry, just saying, I'm all about whatever's, whatever's left.
They're hard decisions to make, aren't they?
Especially when you sit on a water board and they had a hundred and fifty shut off last week for the month.
Robert has. Robert?
I am happy to move to adopt the new fee schedule as a president.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Robert and a second by Greg Shelton with White City. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. We have two nay and the rest are, um, in agreement.
Who was the other lady?
Sherry.
Sherry Orne.
And Nick said very true.
May I make a comment after you're done?
Yes. Uh, so the motion tapped it. And Sherry, like, make a comment.
Yeah, I, um, I suppose I've never been a nayist on this board. I, um, I've been on it for a long period of time, well, since I was elected. Then my, um, role on this board is only because I'm a council member in Harriman. And so my one hundred percent job is to watch out for virus, right? And I, um, boards are interesting because you get elected and then they say, hey, can you serve on this? Can you serve on this? Can you serve on this? And you really have no idea what even any of those are, right? And it takes a period of time to even try to understand. I'm not the garbage expert. I wasn't a mosquito expert. I did a lot, lot of water. I loved water. But anyway, there is, um, things that you don't know. And, um, there are still many things that, that I don't know. I come here once a month, I study my taxes, but I don't get a woodford because I have a job. Uh, many other responsibilities besides my city council responsibility. So, um, there are decisions made by board, like you had referred to in the, in the past, that, um, one hundred percent rely on the, the professionalism of our staff, which I respect here. I, I believe that Woodford, um, tries very hard to keep costs down. But, um, I actually have no idea how much a private Hollywood charge to pick up in Harriman. I don't know. And so it's disingenuous for me to pretend like I do and say, this is the best route for our citizens to go. So that's why when I talked about last week that we're going to go out for an R P, I need to know that because my job is to protect the people who elect me, right? And that doesn't mean that this, this company would, this organization would do anything to damage our residents. Uh, we've had to make a lot of tough decisions in Harriman. We had to leave GPD and create our own fleet for it. Because at some point, maybe cities grow to a point where it makes more sense for them to do their own thing. I don't know. But, um, the process that I'm going to go through helps me understand that and know that. This, um, fee increase is just more than I can swallow right now. We talked, Laurie, I think, last week talked about fights or nibbles. I have residents the same as Mick did. And my guess is a lot of you would too. I broke down another pretend the other day and there are some people there that don't make a lot of money. But, uh, and then there's homes that are crazy for a lot of money, right? So there's such a varying degree of people. I spoke to a lady on my way here. She gave me a list of, even the mosquito bait board, which is a tiny bit, right? Uh, the library gets more off my taxes than my own city does. Um, there is this, this list on your property taxes. We are not listed on property taxes because we're calling fees, but nobody in my city can say no to this. They have to pay, right? So to me, it's a tax. Um, and that's just the taxes. Then they go to the grocery store. This lady has a seven hundred dollar increase between her car insurance and her home insurance combined. It's just the layering on people right now is just too much. So I can't say, I was supportive of doing that. We talked initially about two seventy-five, two seventy-five, those types of things because it gets us through to the next part because quite frankly, a lot of Americans are just trying to get through, right? Trying to live to the next point. They don't have the comfort of saying, we're gonna, we're gonna we're gonna make a lot of money to put a bunch in so we can cover the next whole thing. They're getting by. And so I can't, in good conscience, tell my residents, we're going to take a big chunk. We can push it out further because they're trying to get by. And so that, that would be why I have to say no. Not that I believe anything negative at all about this organization, but simply because that's my job and my responsibility.
Thank you, Sherry.
This is Matt from Cottonwood Heights. Could I add some commentary?
Hi, Matt.
Hey, good morning. I mentioned this to Pam and, and we don't really know how everything's going to shake out. But just so other board members are aware where, where I'm coming from, if, if this fee increase is to a point where it forces some of the other members of the district to want to leave or their residents are wanting to leave the district, then the financial impact on the rest of us that are, would be still in, should they leave, uh, would be much higher. And so I do think, you know, all of our cities, we look at what, um, our residents and, uh, find palatable. But at the same time, But at the same time, being conscious of what else is out there and how Harriman or these other cities might react. Um, because at the end of the day, then our residents will bear a larger burden. So I, 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 this is tentative and we've had some discussions on some potential cost savings and other things. And I would just ask, Sheri, I appreciate you so much on, uh, doing what you do. And again, all of our first duty is to our residents. Uh, but just all, everyone to be full, fully open with one another, um, on what their cities may or may not want to do. So Sheri, I appreciate you being transparent so that we can make the best decisions as a whole, uh, that continue to keep the district healthy. And we'll see how this shakes out over time. And, and, uh, I just, just know, I don't think any of us, uh, hold to it any fault or we completely understand. And again, if, if you were to leave, if Harriman would want to leave, uh, because the fee is that high, then it's probably too high. So, thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Sherry, thank you, Matt. Thank you. Um.
So I have to agree with Sherry, but the problem with me, it's like I said, I think you said, do an awesome job, very supportive. But the problem is, is each city has a whole different outlook, you know what I mean? Where we're at on the west side, where you guys are out on the east side, this isn't a big deal to you guys. But for us, where we're at, it's a big deal. It's a really big deal. When I sat there last week and going through, me being the chair of the water district, we have a hundred and fifty shut off. And, and, and the majority of them, every month, the same people. And we try to work with them and work with them and work with them. It, it's tough, like you said, you know, people are just looking for the next star to have the mail on their table. And I'm going to be honest with you, I'm going to recommend us as a city to go out for an RFP too.
Thank you, Nick. One second, Rachel. And I appreciate the fact that you're going out for RFPs. I think that's really wise, especially for new cities. I think that gives comfort to your residents, that you're doing everything you can to make sure that they are covered. Their, their services are covered at the most efficient rate. Um, I, I really do appreciate that. And I appreciate your comments here. I think that's a reminder of what our jobs are, is working with municipalities and government entities and trying to come together of so many different entities, trying to make this thing work. We do know that there are economies of scale, that if one sold out, two sold out, three sold out, the rest are paying more, like Matt said. Um, there is some concern too, it's, it's, we are, we contract with Woodford. And we don't contract with Woodford, but we are part of Woodford and just by, um, I, I, I mean, let's just be honest about it. It's really hard for cities to just walk away from Woodford. And I want to be sensitive to the fact that if that comes to that point, it may not be easy for cities to do that, but as Matt said, there is a desire. And I don't want to get to that point where there is that feeling like we were here only because we have to be here. Um, so I think as a board, I'm really proud of what everybody has been saying in this meeting. Um, I'm, I'm honored to work with all of you and all of your different opinions and concerns about the communities and the cities and your individual residents. And then I just wanted Rachel to talk a little bit about how Woodford worked with its municipal, municipality and city and how, um, and our township.
Right. Um, and yeah, that's what I was going to talk about. And I think you're exactly right that from a pragmatic approach, if, if there ever are cities that want to leave or are thinking about it, even that's not something that should be ignored. And, you know, those concerns should be addressed. But from a practical approach, I just wanted to explain how it is that a city would even withdraw. And there's like legal procedures for that, other legal things. So districts are made to be special districts, like we are made to be independent legal entities that are just as viable as cities. And they need to be sturdy. And there are a lot of protection built in the law to keep districts dirty so that they cannot be dissolved or, you know, voted quickly and easily. Um, part of the reason for this is, um, for a lot of financial reasons, that, um, districts need to be able to prove to outside funding sources primarily, that we are reliable entities, government entities, that we, that, that we don't just dissolve because people want to leave or in and out. Um, a lot of districts rely on getting, uh, bonds or other, you know, lease financing, tax revenue anticipation financing, um, they're required to have good bond ratings. And financial markets are looking at districts and saying, are you guys reliable? You know, are you going to have portions just up and leave? And if that were to happen, it would affect districts as a whole under the fee to finance. So the law specifically protects districts in a way to make sure that that doesn't happen. Just as with a city, you know, you wouldn't want a neighborhood coming in and saying, we're out, you know, it's basically like just a second.
Right.
You know, so there's a withdrawal statute that's pretty ominous, um, that would have to go through. It requires, um, uh, there's several different routes. I don't want to get too complex, but basically, the primary route is a petition route, which is preparing to get signatures from residents. Um, and the signature requirement is pretty high, like fifty one percent of your visitor to, to petition to leave. And then there would be a public hearing. Um, there's another option if both entities, um, the city and the district would, would file a resolution to proceed. And so that is more like a negotiated departure type route, um, which I don't know of the district. I've never heard of a district. Well, okay, take that back. But anyways, um, anyway, please go. Say, sometimes it is a negotia. But then.
One thing that I would add, one thing I would just add to that is, I think it's proven on us to be as, and try to be as reasonable with all of our member cities, because as we've seen with other districts, these things can become very political. And as you've seen with UPT and other things, um, if there's enough uproar, which we hope there isn't, um, it becomes more than the letter of the law, if that makes sense.
Right. So I'll get to that kind of comment in just a second, but just to conclude what the statute says. Uh, the statute has a list of considerations that have to be taken into account when you're deciding whether to ultimately approve or deny the, the withdrawal. Um, and you are, it specifically says that a district should not, um, approve a withdrawal if it would result in, uh, a breach or default by the district of any financial contractual or other obligations. A lot of those are, you know, like if you have bond payments, which, you know, we don't have. But if you've made an agreement to make lease payments, for instance, on a, on a truck, uh, you know, truck or whatever. Um, often when portions of districts leave or split, there's an agreement for those residents to continue paying on the, for a certain number of years. So happened with Harriman with U F S A. So there's an example where it happens, a district or city has left.
You know, that's a, you know, that's a, yeah, not U F A, not U I.
Um, let's see, uh, if it results in, uh, a reduction of the bond rating, like I said, if it creates an island or peninsula of non-district territory within the district, that's a consideration. Because then all of a sudden, you're losing the ability to easily get to other areas of your district. Um, and if, if such would have material adverse effect on the cost to the ability, the ability of the district to provide service. And then the last consideration is that the board may consider that cumulative impact of multiple withdrawals over a certain period of time. So there's a whole process. It's not impossible. We've, we've done it before. Fire is a little different. So you've gone through it with U F S A. There's a whole different withdrawal statute for, uh, public safety. So if you've gone through that, the public safety, that's completely different. Um, this is the procedure for, uh, our kind of district. So it's not impossible. And like I said, I, I don't think it serves up to just say, no, you, you can't do it because this is too complicated. If, if any city is to the point where they feel that way, I think that, like you said, we need to address that in one way or another. But I just wanted to be clear that it's not just as simple as we're out, you know, it's, it's a process. Make sure that the district remains.
All right, Laurie.
Yeah, remember.
Rachel, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Laurie?
One thing I want to be careful of too, oftentimes when you go out for RFP, it's not apples to apples. You'll get a private entity that can only do one thing or one part of the service and don't do everything that we do at Woodford. So I want to be very cognizant that when people go out to bid, that they're only bidding parts of what we do against what they're doing. Um, if they're doing the whole services of what we're doing, that they're, that they are bidding apples to apples, or if they're not bidding apples to apples, that we be allowed to show the equivalent cost of what we do for that particular service. Because I've seen it happen on multiple occasions where, when they do go out to bid, it's not apples to apples. And so they'll get a lower bid or we go, so that sounds great, but they're losing a lot of services that they get from us that they won't be getting under the new contract. So just something I've seen happen with service districts in the past.
Thank you, Laurie. Sherry?
Um, I, I agree with that a hundred percent, Laurie. I, I, um, hopefully we would be intelligent enough at, at, at our city that we would look at all of that. We, we, I've talked, I used the bad or slop last, last week. But there are, you know, we're seeing coming upon us to understand what our residents want, is it wealth to our residents or is it essential services? So, so all those kinds of questions to be, this news from Rachel is not news. I'm, I've had these discussions with our attorney and our city staff also understand those processes. There's something even on how Harriman was ever part of the district in the beginning. That'd be nice to have some of that documentation because we have nothing that says that we agree to any of it.
So that's back when you were in.
Exactly. So, 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 so there's some confusion about certain processes, if, you know, during those, those types of things too. And I, um, would hope that it would be like Anna had alluded to, that we look at what's best for the cities that's there on, that are in this district, right? And we left U F S A, we are paying back cards of bonds, it's kind of, you know, same, same with Felisa, right? There was some, some figuring out of revenue. We had a, here's how much you owe us, here's how much, you know, there was, there's, there's a lot of negotiating that goes on. I'm not suggesting that it's simple. But I am suggesting that I think it's our right to be able to justify comp. And if we can look at something that's very disparaging, then I think as a, as a community, we should be very loud about that, especially if we're being told by a government entity, sorry, you're locked into that, you can't leave. And, um, so I believe fifty one percent would be hard to get from a community if you showed them like that. And then my hope and my expectation is, we won't be able to say, whoa, this, you're being price gouged because I believe that this, this does a good job. But I, I do believe that, again, back to my original comment, I think it's my responsibility to understand that.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I just want to wrap up. I want to be associated with organizations where people want to be associated. And I plan to be here for another three years. And I, I love how we've all worked together and I'd like to continue to see that happen so that cities like Harriman want to be here and that can, can be here. I'm hoping the day doesn't come where essential services, as we pick up trash. For it. Um, I hate to see that happen. Hopefully it never will. Um, but it is something to keep in mind. And, um, I've appreciated Pam's direction in running really inefficient, you know, an inefficient service. And, um, I think it'll continue down the road and there you go. I have same tough choices.
I have, I have one more comment and it's not a request. This is Sherry Hammond. Um, we talked a lot when we were talking about the last salary increase that we did, um, about, um, we needed to, to keep people here. And it was like, but what about, remind me, uh, benefits were around thirty percent, right? Twenty seven or?
Twenty seven, twenty eight.
Yeah, so, so all around to, to, you know, plus the thirty percent is what they're getting in benefits. And there were some comments made about, yeah, but they're young and they don't appreciate those. They just need to put a paycheck on their thing. I wonder, and I understand, again, economies of scale, there's health insurance and stuff like that, if you only offer certain things to, and I don't know if you can legally, if you can only offer certain things to certain people. But I wonder if it would be better to say, okay, instead of paying the extra thirty percent, we're going to give you a fifteen percent pay raise and, and save the other portion of it if they don't, if they don't appreciate that. I know, I, I've watched kids work at, at the city for a while. And then as soon as they quit, they cash in that euro, give, you know, they cash in all that because they don't understand any benefits of that kind of stuff. But if they're not understanding the benefits, it's not our job to raise them. It's like, well, your kids, maybe you would do that. Say, yeah, I got to put that away because right now they're too young to understand it. These are adults, we're making adult decisions. So what would it do to the cost of our benefit package if we said, okay, here's your option? Where we won't offer you that versus, you know what I'm saying?
I do. And, and so to dive into that, we just signed on with a new broker, a health insurance broker, and we have no premium increases going into twenty twenty five.
Right.
Unbelievable, unbelievable, which saved us quite a bit. We had slugged in nine percent increase. I was hearing twenty percent from other entities and people out of state. And so I was a little worried. And then when we sat down with them and there was no increase in our setup, Hazel Doesmore, HR manager, who's been working with our brokerage, oh, Alliance. Um, and their approach is to start early. So starting in spring, we're going to start looking at benefits and how can they help us manage benefits and reduce cost, right? So there's some things that we're already starting the discussion. Um, what you're talking about, I mean, we, I think we need to go back to the drawing board and really look at our compensation, uh, package and what we offer. I agree, you know, are there different ways we can be more creative that we're not having a long-term obligation? Um, and just everything keeps going up. So there will be some diving in and I can promise you that. Um, my hope is that not, that we won't lose anybody. We've tried to make it easy, an easy decision throughout the decades of, you know, doing small increases. And again, we waited too long and it wasn't enough. And I apologize for that. So now we know where we're at. Um, we as staff will adjust. Um, there is, you know, more information in this tactic, but I, I'm not sure exactly where you want to go as far as information sharing. Um, but we as staff have been looking at ways to trim and to cut. Yes.
Did you say, Laurie? Oh. Hi, Laurie.
I, I had a, uh, a comment from earlier, just, um, I, a comment was made earlier and I'm just going to jump in really quick and I'll just make the comment. Um, and it was to a previous, um, discussion, but it kind of goes along with what you're saying now. And when we were looking at the cuts that you can cite that, um, the comment was made that, you know, there are people who have seen their, their tax increases and their homeowner, homeowners insurance and everything go up. Um, you know, I just got my bill, my, my house property tax and my, um, homeowner's insurance comes in the same month, right? They, they're due the same month, both in November. And my homeowner's insurance went up by four hundred dollars this month. And, um, for November. And my property tax went up by almost three hundred and fifty dollars from last time around out here in Kearns, which seems like a, a lot. Between the two of them, that is an amount that I hadn't counted on. And if you, plus, I know that there is increases that they're looking at for excessive amounts of both, um, Slavisa and, uh, uh, for, um, uh, FS, uh, the fire district as well. And when we're looking at the districts and how much things are going up, whether it's fees or taxes or whatever else, um, they're right, it, it's astronomical. And for those of us, I, I'm a single mom out here. Um, I, I have to take these out monthly. And if I don't, if I didn't take it out monthly for the year, I don't have it at the end of the year. And I actually increased the amount I was taking out by two hundred on both of those, expecting at least a four, four hundred to four hundred and fifty dollar increase this year, and never expecting it would be almost double that, you know? And so it's hard for families, especially when you're on fixed incomes or you only have one income, when these things are happening. So I know that, um, you know, it's important that we do the best we can and we look at the, the budgets that we have. And, but I also recognize that there are many who are out there like me who, um, this means I'm going to have to take on extra work um, over the holidays. It means I'm going to have to take on an extra job again. You know, this, uh, I'll have three, you know, I'll go back to four jobs again, um, here shortly, um, to be able to pay it all off. And it's just, it's a hard world that we live in right now. And when you're having to do those type of things, it's not easy. For those who have two income families, for those who live in more affluent areas, it's a little easier. They don't understand some of the mentality of where we're coming from. So I just want to remind people that, you know, there are those of us out there that are one breadwinner in one house, you know, living in an area where the incomes are very low. And we do the best we can, but these increases are really getting to us, so.
Thank you, Laurie. Okay. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, everyone. And, uh, yeah. It's hard. You know what? Life's messy. Um, paying bills is messy and maintaining, um, all of the services that we need can be difficult. And I have to say that we're heard that we can continue if it's right. Get the best thing for our back out of it. You guys have always proven yourself and, um, done well.
Thank you.
So the one thing to offer is that we, by policy, we have what's called an indigent waiver. So if somebody meets, um, the threshold of being indigent, they apply through the treasurer's office of the county, that we reduce the, the garbage stream by half. So it is in our fee schedule. It's part of what we adopt and you adopt every year. So it would be half of the rate for anyone that's truly indigent.
Hey Pam, could you send, could you send something to me or if others are interested? Um, I'd love to understand that program a little better so I can make sure that it's connected to the people in my community. I don't even know what the qualifications are. I'd love to just be educated on it more.
Okay. Who was that?
Matt.
Matt Holt.
Oh, you just annoyed him. You get to know their voices. All right. We're here. Okay.
I had one, I had my hand up. Can I make one comment, please?
You bet. Please do.
Um, Tessa Stitzer, Copperton. Um, I did want to echo what a few people have said today and, you know, I'm kind of in between both of, of the, the sides really. Um, you know, here in Copperton, we've seen a lot of the same increases proposed. We just had Slavisa at our last council meeting, um, with another proposed increase. I know U F S A is coming with another proposed increase. I know those are all tax-related increases. The difference in Copperton for us and the, the council that I've, I sit for and have spoken with, um, about this is the fact that we do get real numbers from Woodford. We do see line-by-line items. We do have a great board that sits and goes through every single item, tries to find those cuts all the way down to benefits, down to administrative costs. So I do think that Woodford, out of the majority of the tax increases and increases in general that have been proposed to us, has probably done the most fantastic job at being able to cut away at the budget, reduce or remove things on that budget. And there hasn't been a significant increase for quite some time, which may be something we want to think about and learn from going forward, is the fact that when we go years and years and years, because I've been on this board since two thousand sixteen, when we go years and years without any of those increases, at one point we're going to have to increase. And this is a pretty substantial increase. And I don't think anybody is excited or happy when you see increases, when you're paying more out. But I think that out of all of the increases that have been proposed so far, this is probably the only one that's been the most transparent with the most information. And a board that's willing to sit and discuss it for as long as it needs to be discussed to try to find something that works. Um, another thing I wanted to echo was the fact that I think the biggest issue we faced so far with trying to figure out anything from the scrap program to the vouchers, um, the services that are provided, whether or not to go for an RFP, is the fact that all of our communities are very, very unique. None of the communities are like each other. And I think that's something the board really needs to take into consideration going forward. I know that we've heard from people who live in Kearns, Mill Creek, Harriman, um, Cottonwood Heights and now Copperton. And I mean, even down to the scrap program, I've been a thorn in the board's side for a long time with that. But that's primarily because we share driveways here. We don't have the same area at all to any of the other, you know, municipalities, communities, cities, towns. And, um, that's something I think could really benefit us going forward when we talk about subsidizing different types of services and which services to provide. And what things need to be the responsibility of the city or town or, or, you know, municipality, unincorporated, whatever's being served. What needs to be paid for by them versus Woodford and what needs to be split and how it needs to be subsidized? And what people are actually paying for? Um, I do want to echo Matt as well because I would like to know about the indigent program and what that looks like. I don't think I've known enough about that to even make any of the residents I represent aware of that. And whenever there's things that they can do to make their life easier or the board's life easier, or even Woodford's life easier would be a great thing. So, um, that's kind of where I sit. I think at this point, the increase is almost a necessity. Um, I don't, I mean, when you look at the forecast, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to do much without that if we don't remove services. So in order to stay the way we are, I don't see any, with any other direction to go but to increase. But I do appreciate the fact that we've been able to see every single penny of that. And when we've asked questions about certain line items, we've spent hours discussing them until everybody understands them. So that's, that's kind of where I stand. And I know I can speak for my council on this. We've actually had many conversations, um, here about this. So thank you for that.
Yes, that, thank you. And I look forward to all of us being really involved and, um, taking advantage of the information that's put out to the board every month. Um, and getting your comments and your concerns out in the open early in the year. And really, uh, take the time to focus on some of these items that are coming before us. And that's not just regarding fee increases, but all the different actions and, uh, responsibilities of Woodford and the board. So with that, let's move on to confirm the date and time of the public hearing to allow public comment on the twenty twenty-five budget and fee schedule, which is Monday, November eighteenth at six P M. And I'll have, I'll take direction on that, but I don't think we need an approval, Rachel. I think we've already done that.
On the public hearing.
Public hearing?
Um, no, I think we need to do a, a motion for this.
We do need a motion. Okay. So I'll make a motion on, uh, the public meeting for Monday, November eighteenth at six P M.
Motion to approve the date and time of the public hearing, a lot to allow public comment on this twenty twenty-five budget fee schedule uh, for Monday, November eighteenth at six P M.
Thank you, Emily from Holiday. A second. Robert, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. That motion passes. We'll see you all here November eighteenth on a Monday at six P M. Um, we don't need, we don't have closed doors there, closed session. No. Any other business for the board to consider? Seeing that there is none, I'll take a motion that we adjourn.
Madam Chairwoman?
You have it now.
I just want to thank you all for caring about this organization, me and our team as much as you do. I mean, everything you bring up is out of care. And, um, legitimate questions and concern, I will wel- welcome all of them. And if ever you have any questions before a board meeting, please reach out. Um, I consider myself twenty-four seven. I do take that seriously. My fellow.
Even on my attention.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, it's okay. That's, that's, I, I want to answer questions and, uh, all within the district, absolutely. So thank you. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, Mick and Emily, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, everyone.